I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rich here.
Here.
Leggins.
Here.
Hall.
Doughty.
Here.
Randles.
Here.
Banjers.
Here.
Mallett.
Here.
Okay, consent agenda, I need approval for the minutes of the regular session of February 7th, 2023, and approval of the minutes of the closed session, February 7th, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The approval of bills, questions, comments on the bills?
I move that we accept the bills as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approval of the agenda, additions or deletions, I need a motion to add the approval of Ward 1 Councilman for tonight, if I could get a motion in a second for that?
So be it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll go ahead with that, I would like to fill the Ward 1 Council seat that was created by the resignation of Councilman Young due to changes in his job description, and I would like to, for to finish out that term, appoint Nick Alcar, if I could get a motion for that?
So be it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nick, come up here. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of Missouri.
The Constitution of Missouri.
The provision of all laws of this state.
The provision of all laws of this state.
Affecting cities of the third class.
Affecting cities of the third class.
And the ordinance of the city.
And the ordinance of the city.
I possess all the qualifications.
I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for this office.
Prescribed for this office.
By law.
By law.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
I will faithfully demean myself.
Into the office which I was appointed.
To the office which I was appointed.
On the 21st day of February 2023.
On the 21st day of February 2023.
In the city of Butler, Missouri.
In the city of Butler, Missouri.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to scheduled guests, first we have Jim Wheatley, presiding commissioner.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Evening.
I want to come and talk with you about the issue that was presented to me by a couple of members of the city in reference to issues that you're having with Kasinger, getting some work done that you had contracted with them to get done. Have you, by any chance, had words with them, Mike, since you and I talked?
Yes, yeah, as a matter of fact, we've got an addendum to the contract for approval tonight.
Good, so things have gotten worked out?
Yes.
One thing that you probably have heard rumors and rumblings about, Kasinger does not have a director at this point. The Board of Directors voted to have the director put in her resignation or be terminated. And she put in her resignation. A lot of factors were involved in it, and some of which you've probably heard the group themselves, each of the employees had been assigned to a county, not the director or the assistant director going around, coming in, talking to the councils, talking to the commissions, anybody. They were having the employees come in and do it. And Ryan was assigned to Bates County. Nothing against him, nothing against any of the other employees. What it boiled down to, she was not doing her job and delegating it to somebody else. There were a lot of things we found out that were not being completed. They had one product that was supposed to have been set together, a grant, that did not meet its deadline, and they lost the grant. They have another grant that they found that they are behind on. The federal government, two extensions? Have given them two extensions, the first one was an automatic one, they went back and requested an additional to give them time to get that grant completed, which is a substantial grant that Kasinger was going to need. Now, those of you that may or may not understand, Kasinger is made up of seven counties in this region. There's multiple regional planning commissions around the state. Some of them have only got four counties, ours has got seven, some have even got more than that, some have got a lot less. The regional planning commissions, as far as the commission's concerned, we have to stay with the regional planning commission now, primarily because of what MODOT did for bridges. I don't know if you've ever heard of the project, bridges, replacement, offline BRO projects? MODOT always took care of that funding. With the new federal money that came down after the first of the year, MODOT decided they didn't want to mess with it. Well, their director and I had a little discussion out of the hall, out of the legislative session this last year, over Jeff City. So when he went in to talk to everybody, everybody said, "He was a little frustrated, what did you do?" I just told him we didn't like the idea. Because now, we're lumped together with other regional planning commissions trying to get bridges built. When we had the bridge inspection four years ago, we had four, no, we had six bridges that were eligible for replacement in Bates County. Two years ago, when we had the bridge inspection, we had three. I had no idea. We had a meeting over in Clinton, all the commissioners and some of the other members from councils and cities in the Kasinger region were there. The question was brought that the bridge, very fixed the other bridges, because everybody's bridges were cut in half. They had no answer. So what it boils down to, we're having to fight to make sure we get the monies that we need to get the bridges built. They did this last, right after Thanksgiving, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, a group went down to Springfield where multiple regional planning commissions were at. The money was distributed, and Kasinger, each one of the counties that has a bridge to be built, will get a bridge to be built. Because we were all afraid we were not going to get bridges, what it boiled down to. Well, they finally found the money, so everybody's getting a bridge, and it's going to get into a three-year cycle now. So we'll have to bid every year from here on out to get money, just to get bridges built. Again, luckily, we're not in too bad a shape. So that's a good one. But again, some of the things that you've heard about Kasinger, Kasinger's still moving ahead. We're going to realign that, when I say "we," I'm on the Board of Directors. I didn't know that until the last meeting we had. Found out the hard way, I get ready to get up and just sit down, "We're having a closed meeting." Okay. There will be a new realignment to whomever is the new director, and that new director and the assistant director will be the ones that you'll be seeing coming, talking to you about what Kasinger's going on with. Now, Ryan and some of the others, if they're working on projects for you, you'll steal from them. They'll come talk to you and tell you where they're at. But other than that, that's what it's about. Now, one quick thing before I finish. Butler has not had a very strong representation at the Kasinger meetings. Now, there's three different, you know, three different areas that you can have representation in. You can have it in the general meeting, you can have it at the TAC meeting, and at the solid waste meeting. So you've got three positions that you can technically have someone fill. Right now, I'm covering for all of Bates County except Adrian. The city administrator, Adrian's been, he showed up to, I think, the last three meetings that I've been to. So I mean, Mike's been to a couple of them that I've been to. So I mean, if you want more information, if you want me to give you updates on what's going on, because Mike can't make it, or something else, or if you want to have someone else appointed to come and be in these other positions, let us know, we'll let Kasinger know, so you guys will have representation for various things that are going on, and eligibility for programs. If not, if you want me to do it, just let me know. I'm kind of in a position, I have to go to all the meetings now, so. But anyway, does anybody have any questions about what's going on that I may have an answer to? Don't sell.
Of course.
You're like me, there's always a question.
At the ARPA funds, have you?
We have not started looking at that.
What's the deadline?
We have until '24 to spend the money. And that's what the commissioners, they keep telling, the other two commissioners, "Just tell people we got to '24 to spend the money." I says, "I know, but we've got to get back into this." This last couple of weeks, one of it short weeks, but we've been getting hit by some things that I'm sure Mike knows about. Wind farms, being located here in Bates County. And I'm going to have to have a phone call with FAA and a couple of members of Congress to find out why FAA is allowing this to happen. Because they're wanting to put them within the flight path of the arrival and departure on the north end of Butler, Georgia. They're up almost at the sink. But again, they don't have anything but instrumentality, they can't have anything else. I've talked to a couple of pilots, and they're not happy. Solar issues, we're catching a lot of issues wanting solar in this area. So, our place has been full, kind of like your guys'.
Okay, so I have one more thing to bring up too, with Kasinger. You know, several years ago, supposedly that the railroad got that grant that's supposed to help with the, yeah, they got a grant for the 52, the railroad overpass, the underpass?
Mm-hmm.
And they said that this wouldn't become effective until probably 2026. I just want to know if that's still on the?
No, the STIP, we were just talking about that, the STIP plan shows?
So, so yes, the underpass is planned to get in the STIP for 2027.
So that's been extended to 2027?
Um, for right now, yes.
We keep pushing that because of the area that it is and what can happen.
Absolutely, and, you know, I mean, even though that's, you know, MODOT and the railroad, it's when you are aware of something, and right now, as a city, we're aware that that is a problem. It's very problematic with people walking in the dark.
Like I say, I bring it up at the TAC meeting, not every time, but just about every time, because I see where it's at, and it's still on the STIP.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that money is still there, I mean, because they keep pushing it out and?
Well, with this new money under the federal government that they got, IIJA, is that correct? I think that's right, IIJA, that's the new federal money that came about the first of the year. And that's infrastructure, all that stuff. That money going into that big pot, MODOT is still managing putting that out, like I say, to the RPCs to get these projects going and get them done. I will look into that for the next meeting that they have.
Yeah.
And I will let Mike know, if you want me to come back before council, I'll come back and let you know what I find out. Again, if there's things you want me to look at, going to Kasinger, let me know. I'm the elephant in the back of the room.
I want to stay on top of that, because I think that's very, it could be a safety issue. And I want you to stay on top of this ARPA funds too, because everybody's just kind of sitting back waiting for?
I just got hit on that a minute ago before, you're the second hit me with that.
Yes.
We have not released any of the second round of money. So, don't think that we've already spent it all, you guys are left out. Second round of money, we haven't spent any yet.
Is there a time schedule for a director? To be in place?
No, we talked about that in our closed session. They were debating on how they wanted to go about trying to find a director this time. The last time, they just put it out for bids, basically an RFU, just to see who had the qualifications for it. The person before that, they hired an outside entity to actually go out and find someone. It's $500, what they told us in the meeting the other day, and I'm thinking, okay, Bates County, you pay the $500, let's, don't do this again, and put four or five people in a room, going through, no, give it to somebody, and let them do their job. So, until we have our next meeting, I haven't heard anything yet. I've been waiting, expecting a phone call from a couple of people on the half jet. But as soon as we get a director, you'll know.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
And next, I have Ryan Peter.
So what I am mostly sure today is just some details on the addendum that you'll be, go down later on today. On the front is, maybe I should, maybe I should have my list. So as discussed in the planning commission meeting last week, I discussed with the two main concerns we had concerning the current plan that we had proposed in our last city council meeting. The thing about the aggressive timeline and about not enough local representation. So as a result, on the front page here, I have an adjusted schedule for how that timeline's going to lead. Instead of three meetings, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be at least four. It'll be two meetings in March, two meetings in April for each of the two committees, so it will be eight meetings in total scheduled over the next two months. With an optional fifth meeting for each one at the beginning of May, if there needs to be time for it. And then with, when they had a public comment period in May, and then ratification in June, if everything goes well. As part of the process, so that it's not as aggressive, I'll be laying out sections of the plan weekly going forward. Every single Tuesday, I will have a section of the plan on a Google Drive folder that I'll be linking to, linking over to Mike next week, and he will share it with the rest of as well as with everyone that are on the, on the two different committees. The governmental committee as well as the, as the community committee. On that back side is the list of ten people that we're going to have for the committee. And the planning commission is looking into adding those extra people, the L word we're suggesting to add, to round out the local representation for Butler. I also have there what the four different subfolders will be on the Google Drive. Subfolder for each subsection, a subfolder for whenever the whole plan is complete, some reference documents that we'll have as part of the development of the plan, as well as a folder for what we'll use for the public comment period, for what that final draft for the public is going to be, along with a survey log. And then at the bottom there is the committee meeting, I like how that'll generally be, or do we need, I mean, like a basic 10-minute presentation at the beginning of each committee meeting, that's, they got five minute, like, five minute rough overview as to what we'll talk about in the last committee meeting, and what the current agenda will be for the public. And there's the states there. Yeah, that is the plan as of, as of right now.
So have you made contact with any community committee members yet?
I have not yet. What else I could, with the planning commission, if they're wanting to make some contact first.
So you told us last time you were going to call, and now you're planning to have two meetings in March, which is a week away, and you haven't even contacted any of these people again? So, and you haven't identified your full committee, so how, again, are you planning to meet this deadline when we don't even have the first step of the plan done?
So, so the concept right now is to, I generally meet on the second and fourth week of each month. So it's still giving me about two weeks to organize that other committee to get things settled.
So do you have a backup plan if these people can't do it?
Um, yes. So, so right now, I, I have a rough, a rough spreadsheet of all of the small business owners in and I'll run a random number generator for all those businesses, and I'll just start going down the numbers until people say, say yes, to participate. And again, between the planning commission and I, we will keep in contact people until we have at least told people that are willing to say yes to be a part of that committee.
So when does that start? Because the planning commission just met the other day, when do they meet again, or when do you plan to have that? Because they don't meet very often, so what's the plan there, if you're waiting on them, you're saying?
That's a good point.
I don't know, I mean, when does the planning commission meet again?
Uh, we meet in, what was it, March the?
Fourteenth, isn't it?
Fourteenth?
Fourteenth, yeah.
Communicating with them before the fourteenth, because if not, that already puts you in the second week of March, and you don't even have a list of that.
Mike, do we need to interject something there about what we talked about?
You go for it.
Uh, at the planning commission, we discussed with Ryan the situation that he's been thrown into, and in our council plans and notes here tonight, you'll see that at the planning commission, we had an agreement reached that the planning commission recommends to the council to approve that, basically without a director, as Jim Wheatley just stated, these people like Ryan and his position are overwhelmed and swamped. So, the planning commission puts before the council tonight for your approval to give him a two-week extension, so to speak, to clear his plate of a previous responsibility he had that will be cleared up, Ryan, in how much time?
In about, in about a week.
About a week, he'll have this prior responsibility he had before everything changed and dumped in his lap. That will be wrapped up and gone, and he can focus solely on ours. Now, since we're already into that, if the council has any questions to Ryan about that, I suppose we can go ahead and cover that. Or Mike, would you suggest we move, go ahead and wait till, because we're about ready to talk about the boards and committees here, but?
I would say, you know, if the council, do you have any other questions for, for Ryan?
I guess, and also, we're asking the rest of the council, do you see any reason why we cannot give him the two-week extension to free his plate up to be able to focus solely on us alone? Are there any questions about that, or concerns?
Yeah, we have an addendum with a timeline here that can't be met if we give him two weeks before he even starts.
Okay, well, we're going to have to move that then, so his timeline will have to be adjusted also, right, Ryan? Or will it?
So we're putting the due diligence of the committee development on the planning commission then? Is that how I'm understanding it, you're making the planning commission pick the committees?
So the planning?
Or they just providing you names?
We're just providing names to him, to go along with the names on the back here.
And that'll be done, though, before you guys meet again? That's not contingent on your meeting on the fourteenth?
Well, we will be meeting on the fourteenth.
So the names won't even be given to him until the fourteenth?
I can reach out to the planning commission and get the names before then.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to ask here, like, do we have to wait till they officially meet, or can names be gotten to him before?
I believe they can be gotten to him.
Okay.
I mean, we're not trying to be comical here and have a little show or anything, but, you know, a little bit of understanding with the situation that him and his fellow workers have been thrust into would go a long ways, because we decided we wanted a quality product, right?
Yeah.
So to get that quality product, now we're going to have to be a little bit lenient in understanding of the situation.
So does that mean we get to put our payment off two weeks, since they get two extended weeks to work?
Did you see the addendum? That was on your table?
Yeah, it has four committee meetings being held in March, two for each committee, and if he doesn't even develop and start contacting the committees until the seventh, these people, I'm sure, are very busy. My concern is that there's no way already that he can get four committee meetings in in March.
Right.
Yeah, he's not going to meet that deadline.
You know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't take that into consideration, I'm just saying I don't think we should sign a contract addendum if we're already saying it can't be met.
I agree. Like I said, I've been hesitant, and even at the planning commission, I was very hesitant, and I wanted to make sure that we're not setting Kasinger Basin up to fail. However?
I mean, if I get the names sooner, then I can contact them next, next week.
Yeah.
So these people can be contacted next week?
Yes, as long as I get the other names, then yes, I can start contacting.
Any other questions for Ryan? Okay, thanks. Committee report, finance?
Uh, yes, the finance committee met earlier today to discuss the, to review and possibly modify the current purchasing policy. However, after a thorough discussion, it was decided to table it at this time, and we're going to be having another meeting on March the 27th, at six o'clock.
The 21st?
I'm sorry, 21st.
Yes.
It's six, I was trying to prolong it. That's all I have.
Work session?
On Saturday, the council met with a work session for the purpose of the 2023-2024 budget. After lengthy discussion, they have, the council has advised us to go ahead and publish. That will take place for the March 17th meeting, correct, Cory?
What, the?
For the hearing.
Twenty-first.
The twenty-first, yeah. So the hearing for the budget will be held on the 21st of March. That was all.
Okay, boards and commissions, planning commission?
As Scott had touched base on, as far as the, as far as Kasinger Basin and Ryan, he did come to the planning commission, gave them a brief, or gave them an overview of what's going on with the comprehensive plan. We also, the planning commission also gave their input as to the yeah, the line, the timeline, excuse me, the timeline, and from
And from that point, there was also some discussion in regards to getting the committees together. They were recommending to the council that, of the, of the changes that we had spoke about just a little bit ago. So, along with that, the planning commission also met in regards to the hearing, or excuse me, for 404 Northwest, as far as the rezoning request on it. In your packets, you do have a certification and recommendation from the planning commission in regards to the rezoning application at 404 Northwest, and that was denied. Along with that, there was also a hearing for the zoning ordinance titled Medical Marijuana Facilities. On that, the, there is a certification of recommendation in your packets in regards to that, which they had approved. The 100 South Fran conditional use permit, the planning commission has tabled that action until the next meeting due to requesting some additional information. And I believe that was it.
Okay, park board? Uh, the park board met, and we finally did have a quorum. We looked over the survey that the city took on what people would like to see come into the park systems as, you know, dog park, various other items that were on there, more play equipment, tennis court updates and this and that. And in looking at it, we know that that'll all be contingent on finances, and no decision or recommendation was made on any one of them being a choice of something to move and pull the trigger on. They'll have to be a little more study than just a survey that we took basically to see what people would like to have in the town at park system. So that's about what we talked about. The airport commission?
We did have a meeting of the airport commission. Basically, the only thing we talked about was a contractual agreement between the Tracy Burns Customs Spring Operations, and they're having to complete some infrastructure out there to make all that happen and make it be functional. That's all we talked about. I have a paper here if anyone wants to see that. I don't have any great details at this time. Was Mike wants to add something?
No, other than I know that the last couple of meetings, they had discussed the upcoming project for the Pappy Lights. So, and that will be later on in the meeting with the resolution for the mayor to be authorized to sign.
Okay, unfinished business done. Okay, now we've got a couple of public hearings. The first public hearing will be zoning change at 404 Northwest Street. So at this time, we'll open that public hearing. Anyone wants to speak? If you'd come up to the podium and state your name?
Well, I was told to come back by Mike today. I was asked a couple, three weeks, months ago to give the council another opportunity rather than put an RV park out here around this motel. So I thought, well, I've got land over there 250 feet from the, somebody said it was in the middle of town, but it's 250 feet from the city limits. But I didn't know Mike was so dead against it, and I wouldn't put the $150 up to start with. You voted against it, Mike, on the planning commission?
Correct, yes.
I took it you was against it. Yes, or no?
But have I used my position in any way to?
No, but you was against it at that time.
Okay, all right. So let's just make that clear, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I've been here probably longer than anybody, except maybe Don Maylin in this community. We've rehabbed over 70 houses. Rather than tearing them down, they're on the tax roll for the county, the ambulances, and the schools. But tonight, I'm gonna withdraw that proposal because several people don't want to do it. And like I say, I've been in this community probably longer than anybody except Don Maylin. And we've done quite a bit for the community, the tax basis and everything. But if we don't change things, we're losing population. Adrian just put in an RV park. They've got a barber and a grocery store. We don't. If we don't get more population in this community, we're never gonna get a grocery store. And I know all you counselors are aware of that, and there's probably not much we can do, but we need to get more population in here somehow. I'm withdrawing, Mike. Some people thought that it was gonna hurt their community, their property value. Well, they're sitting on the edge of commercial property, and they're in a flood zone. So I don't think an RV park would hurt some people. But I'm willing to withdraw that. I may go ahead and put some low-income housing in, because this is a poor community. Some of those RVs probably are worth more value than some of our houses. That's sad to say, but it's the truth. I've got a guy I rent to that drives a lawnmower to work at McDonald's. He gets it 12 hours a week during the winter. Now, you know, it's sad, but it's true. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Pat? Okay, I guess that's been withdrawn. Anybody else want to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on that. Now, have a public hearing on marijuana zoning. So at this time, we'll open that public hearing.
You talking about that?
Hmm?
You think you don't want to say?
You just asked Anthony if anybody answered any questions?
You don't want to, you don't got nothing on that?
Nope.
Sorry, don't want to say anything.
Any public comment on the marijuana zoning? Okay, we'll close that public hearing. All right, bills, ordinances, resolutions. We'll have a resolution 486 to authorize the mayor to execute a project change request for the comprehensive plan, which we just talked about. And I think everybody's got a copy here. I think there was a question about the, that came up about the final billing date. And if you notice in here, it did change that, I believe, to, it was June 30th. Now, it's, it says June 30th or final completion and delivery. Whichever is later. So I'm looking for, if there's no question in the council, I'm looking for a motion to authorize me to execute that.
Well, what happens if we don't meet those timelines? Is it just basic completion by June 30th? It doesn't matter? I mean, I know some of those things have to happen, like the 30-day comment period obviously has to be 30 days. But my concern by signing it with these dates based on what the planning commission is recommending, we're already signing a contract that is out of compliance. Because if he's not gonna have the committee recommendations in a timely manner to meet that March deadline, we're already off base.
That would be my question. Our next installment for the payment, the four payments, is March 30th. And if we don't see a significant improvement in what's been presented to us, then we still gonna make the payment? What are we gonna do?
That would be the addendum. That would be, you know, that's up to you.
What do you think, Anthony?
Well, initially, that third payment was due to be paid at the end of the previous calendar year, if I recall correctly. They were willing to reschedule that in this instance. And then the final payment is not due until either the deadline of completion or them providing the final product to you guys, whatever is later. Ideally, they meet their deadline and the final invoice is the 30th of June. But that's, that's basically the timeline that they had proposed. And my suggestion was making the final payment the latter of either the final deadline or the completion of the project and submission to you guys. But I think the main thing is whether or not you guys feel comfortable with the timeline or not.
Right now, we really don't.
No.
We don't think so. So were these the original dates? I mean, all these dates, were they what was originally signed up on to begin with?
They were supposed to be done with the plan by March.
Right.
Like, done, done.
Okay.
We're not even able to get it.
Well, I feel like the amendment that we're looking at tonight needs to reflect that date of the extra two weeks that we're giving him. I mean, the dates need to be adjusted. If we're in agreement, if we're in agreement that we're gonna give him two weeks to clear his plate, then what we vote on tonight, the dates need to be adjusted in that.
Well, the only reason that concerns me is that these are very specific timelines. There's not a lot of wiggle room where this can overlap with that. And they have to go in this order, and they have to have a certain amount of time to accomplish, so...
Yes.
And I think that even these people that are on this list are very busy people. I can't imagine scheduling with them is going to be very easy on him either, so...
Even Plan B, those folks.
Yeah, I just, I think that even the two weeks is going to be an aggressive goal.
Yes. So we need to move these dates two weeks back, just like we give him to the two weeks. If we agree to give him the two weeks.
I mean, it doesn't say on your invoice procedures what Anthony was saying, that the final invoice, it shall be billed upon completion of the deliverables.
Completion of it. But we got a payment coming, we got two more payments.
Right, we have one in March, and then the final one.
And then one at completion.
Yeah.
So we need to...
But we've paid them half the money, but we haven't got half, half the walk we're paying for yet, right?
That is correct.
Yes, and that is...
So to me, this March debt, March payment should be moved out accordingly.
Yes.
If we're gonna move out to help them out, then I think that that March payment should be moved out to the end of April.
Unless, Ryan, you work better under pressure? You want to still leave the tight dates?
Hey, if you all want to move it to April, we can move it to April.
But you're not gonna then bulk everything out and say, I have another project, and I need two weeks of April payment?
I mean, we got pool on that, I mean, I know, but he can't make that decision.
I'd rather just get this over with.
Unfortunately, we're putting him on the spot.
I know, but it's something he has to be able to adhere to. If we set a timeline that he can't meet, then that doesn't do anybody any favors.
I do agree that. I think that these payment due dates should be modified more. The March should be April, and the June should probably be July.
Yeah.
Of course, it says whichever is later. So if you don't get the final product till July, they don't get paid till July.
Until the final delivered.
So I don't know that that one's so bad, but that March one, I think, needs to be moved out.
Needs to be moved, like the two weeks extension we're giving them, of course. So do, Ryan, do you need to talk to Kasinger again then on moving that March there, is data two weeks? Ryan, do you need, are you talking to Anthony or?
I'm talking to Anthony.
Anthony, okay.
Oh, I thought you were starting with Ryan.
He said Ryan.
You're the one that's gonna have to call over there and do this, probably, so...
Well, let me, I'm sorry, I was confused because you were looking at me instead of Ryan. So for the March payment, in terms of rescheduling that, you know, maybe we could tie that to another deliverable as well? Just as, you know, I see that April committee comments, are those something that are provided to the city? Or?
On the comment, on the comment period?
Timeline for April.
Right, see, that should be, that should be the draft, correct? For the 30-day comment period? Right. So do you want to ear tag it with the draft?
I mean, that's just an option. If you guys want assurances, you know, that, you know, you're not having to pay until you're actually seeing results, you know, you can kind of make it similar to the final payment, where it's either a certain date or the completion of a certain task, whichever is later. Just an idea.
So we tag it, so?
He's got that April the 25th. He says initial full plan draft on April the 25th, so can we tie that payment in to that date?
Well, that's hot, that, that task, not the date, the task.
The task, the task.
So then if he's two weeks behind, as soon as he submits that draft...
Then we can forward the payment.
Yeah. And then that doesn't, the contractual is already out, and what?
Okay, so you want to tag, you want to tag the 30-day comment, the 30-day draft, or the draft right before the 30-day comment? We want to ear tag it for the deadline for the third payment?
When he submits the full plan draft?
Right.
Is the task.
Right.
Doesn't have anything to do about comments on there, it just says full plan draft.
Well, yeah.
That's what, I'm looking for the one he gave.
Right, yeah.
I'm not looking at the same thing as you.
No, because he did, it's here.
Thank you.
Yeah, he has April 25th as a full plan draft. But if we tie it to that task and he's two weeks behind?
Right.
Then the payment is tied to that draft.
Exactly, yeah.
So you want to push all the dates back two weeks and see about tying the third payment to, where does it say, the 25th of April? Oh, okay, sorry. And tie the third payment to the completion of that, or two weeks after April 25th, whichever is later, since we're moving everything back two weeks? Is that correct?
Yes.
What you guys would like to?
Yes.
You a little wet?
Yep.
All right.
I got it.
Okay.
But regard, but regardless, until then, we'll proceed on, so...
Okay, resolution 487, it's authorized me to execute the aviation project consultant agreement with Alfred Benish and Company.
Okay, in your packet, there is the consulting agreement. Alfred, Alfred Benish and Company, they are our engineering firm that does the airport. And they will be doing the project for the Pappy Lights. This is their proposal, or bid document, or execute the consulting agreement. And I believe it is just under $100,000, $99,000. All of this money is covered by federal and state grants, so... This is similar to what we've done in the past as far as with projects out at the airport. So I would recommend that you would pass the resolution. So, I would recommend that you would pass the resolution.
Just need a motion? Make a motion?
Second. Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, resolution four eight eight, the resolution authorized me to sign a con, uh, a notice of award and execute a contract with Blevins Asphalt Construction Company.
Okay. In your packet, there should be documentation. I'm having a tough time pulling it up on my computer. In regards to the upcoming twenty twenty-three, uh, road project. We had five, uh, firms bid for this project, and the low bid came in at, uh, from Blevins at, uh, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So, the resolution is to award the bid to Blevins and then authorize the mayor to execute, uh, contract documents once they're drafted and, uh, or, and, and reviewed by our attorney.
I make a motion, then we do it. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's bill number twenty twenty-three zero one, uh, dealing with chapter twenty-six on the medical marijuana facility. Everybody get a chance to look at that?
Not real well, can you explain briefly what that means? I mean, I understand we, the zoning of the medical marijuana, but the.
Correct.
What's it really saying? We can sell marijuana the same place we could recreational marijuana?
We'll let Anthony, uh, give you the spiel on this one.
So, currently, in the zoning ordinance, there's a section or article pertaining to medical marijuana facilities. Um, the idea behind this ordinance is simply to amend that so that we could work in the recreation, the new recreational facilities, uh, within those confines. So, wherever medicinal facilities are currently authorized, that's where recreational facilities, uh, would be authorized as well. Those recreational facilities include, uh, various types of comprehensive, uh, facilities that, um, medicinal marijuana facilities can apply to become, um, as well as, uh, micro businesses as well. So we edit the definition portion to account for that. And then we get into, uh, the citing requirements that basically, uh, continues, um, with what I was saying before, that now recreational facilities or dispensaries can, uh, operate under the same conditions as medical, uh, facilities. So, uh, they can be operated as conditional uses on Highway Commercial District, um, Commercial Three and General Business District, uh, C two, um, upon SaaS factory completion of, uh, provisions in this ordinance. And then it just provides, uh, various, you know, citing requirements such as not being within one thousand feet of an existing school, uh, church or daycare. And then it just continues, uh, for cultivation facilities, uh, manufacturing facilities, testing facilities, et cetera.
So basically, if you can sell medical marijuana, you can sell recreational marijuana?
Uh, provided that you go through the Department of Health and Senior Services processes. Um, you could do so in the same places you could do medical, um, in the city.
So this resolution tonight would just bring us into compliance with what the state has passed into law, basically?
Essentially, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any further questions? If not, I entertain a motion for first reading by title only. I make that motion?
Second. Rich? Negative. Alkar?
I'm, I'm good with it.
Liggins?
Yes.
Paul? Doughty?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
Behringer?
Yes.
Mallett?
Negative.
Bill number twenty twenty-three dash zero one. An ordinance of the City of Butler, Missouri, amending chapter twenty-six zoning of the Butler City Code by amending Article Eight previously titled as Medical Marijuana Facility. Do I have a motion for second reading by title only?
Second.
Rich? Negative. Alkar?
Yes.
Liggins?
Yes.
Paul? Doughty?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
Behringer?
Yes.
Mallett?
Negative.
Bill number twenty twenty-three dash zero one. An ordinance of the City of Butler, Missouri, amending chapter twenty-six zoning of the Butler City Code by amending Article Eight previously titled as Medical Marijuana Facilities. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Rich? Negative. Alkar?
Yes.
Liggins?
Yes.
Paul? Doughty?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
Behringer?
Yes.
Mallett?
Negative.
Okay, that's ordinance eleven fifty-nine. Report, city clerk?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Police chief?
Nothing tonight, sir.
City attorney?
Nothing tonight, sir.
City administrator?
Oh, yeah. Um, got a few items. Uh, number one, uh, in my notes, I had put in there in regards to the three oh one West Dakota property. Uh, Mr. Landers, uh, built, uh, demo permit has, uh, lapsed. And as you know, uh, you guys were the ones that gave him an initial forty-five day.
Mm-hmm.
Our ordinances, from this point on, there's nothing in here that, that says what to do next. So, um, you know, I know, I drove by there tonight. He, he had someone down there working on it. They can, and they continue to make progress. So, you know, uh, I just need to know which direction you guys wanna go with this. Do you want to?
Last thirty-four times I drove by, there's always been someone there actually doing stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, it's slowly getting better. I mean, I see where you.
I, I know.
It's taking a long time, but it's just.
I know.
It's eventually gonna be gone, and it's gonna be clean when it is. I mean, it's, I mean, it's sad to say that, but it's better than what most of them do, and they just leave it for the city to deal with.
Yeah.
At least the guy's trying, he's actually, since we had to discuss it from last time, he's actually been working on it. I mean, every time I drive by, I've seen someone there actually do, I'm not saying they're very fast.
Well, I don't know. It's one of the people they have to help with.
I think he's more.
Not only has to take himself.
Just to get rid of it.
Yeah.
Have you spoken to him?
I have not spoken to Richard this, uh, this month, no.
I think it would be a wise decision to at least talk to him to see what he thinks his timeline might be.
Okay.
I mean, he is making progress, you say, but I think we need to do our due diligence and ask him. We've given him this extra time.
Right.
Uh, we're setting an example for others to follow. So, if he could just tell us what he thinks his timeline is going to be.
I will get back with you at the next meeting.
Yeah, if there's any, any possible way he could give us a completion date, you know, I mean.
Well, he's given completion dates before.
Given completion dates before.
So, yeah.
And this may be weather related going forward, too.
Well, there, there was a lot of things going on with him, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Not, not just weather, but.
But like Trey says, he is making progress, and he is down there working on it.
A precedent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. Yes, he, he is working, the next person may not, and so we have to be careful that we don't set a precedent.
I. Can't let it linger forever down there.
Yes, right. So, I will get back with you at the next meeting. Okay, uh, the other item, I know that some of you had questioned on the surplus property. Um, we have a, the department heads have given me a list. Um, and we will be putting together a notice, uh, this week, hopefully, if not first of next week. Right now, it just looks like it's, uh, a lot of, uh, junk vehicles. So, there's not a whole lot involved with that. Just to give you a heads up or, or give you an update on the, uh, financials for January, uh, budget. Uh, we have two months remaining in the current budget, and, uh, everything seems to be looking, uh, good. The general fund revenue is right on track, uh, with the budget, and expenditures are close to eleven and a half percent under. Uh, the utility fund revenues are higher than what is expected. Uh, electric and water sales are about twelve percent higher than we forecasted. Also reflects, this also reflects on the respective expense funds as they are roughly about ten percent above pro- projection. Uh, sanitation expenses obviously are up, uh, due to the new contract, and the other funds thirty through seventy are in the expected range given the reduction in purchases due to the product availability. I know that, uh, Anthony had sent to me this afternoon, uh, the first rendition on the, uh, the chicken and, uh, rabbit ordinance. And I'm in the process of re- reviewing that and bouncing ideas back and forth with, with Anthony. The only other thing that I have is in regards to the airport. And, uh, Mr. Wheatley had touched base on that as far as the, uh, the wind turbines in your, in your packets and on, and posted on our website is the letter from the FAA in regards to the, uh, to the proposed wind farm. Uh, our, uh, chairperson from the Airport Commission, as well as Chris Hall, which, uh, runs the skydiving. Uh, they will be making comments with the FFA, or FAA, as well as, uh, contacting the actual prop, or, or the actual, uh, co- company that's putting in the, the wind turbines itself. I would encourage anyone, especially the pilots that use our airport, to make their voices heard. But when you do that, and if you do that, please make sure that you give a reason why, and just not because you're opposed to it. Uh, because those don't carry any weight, so you have to be able to do that. I know, uh, in, just touching base with, uh, Elizabeth, which is our, uh, contracting consultant for the airport, there was a couple of the, uh, wind turbines that, uh, was on the, that, that were closest to the airport that she had some concerns with. Uh, they don't, uh, according to the FAA, they really don't fall within their guidelines. However, uh, in speaking with, uh, MoDOT as well, they said that this company is very good about working with, uh, airports and stuff. So, uh, please make sure that, uh, if you guys wanna make any comments or anything, uh, do so. That is all that I have for you this evening.
Okay, public works, here. Code enforcement? Our chief's not here. Mayor, uh, my condolences to Bill McGuire family, uh, passed away. He, he, uh, has lived in Belton for several years, but he, uh, lived in Butler, uh, a long time. He was, uh, at one time, uh, a councilman, uh, councilman here. I think he did at least one term. He was on the fire department for, uh, can't remember, in the, in the seventies, early eighties, twelve, fourteen years. Uh, his son Brad was on the fire department, and his son Doug been on the fire department. He's still on the fire department for several years. So, uh, condolences to the, the family. I think that's all I got. Councilman reports, Rich?
Nothing further, sir.
Alkar?
Nothing further.
Liggins?
Yes, I would like to extend my condolences, uh, to the Bill McGuire family as well. Um, there was one residential complaint, uh, but when I called and talked to Cory, uh, it was taken care of. So thanks to Cory and to Trent for taking care of that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Doughty? Randall? Behringer?
I kinda wanna revisit the swimming pool issue and the lifeguards that were mowing. Um, I talked to some lifeguard kids today, and, um, I just kinda like to know what his process was when he had those kids. I would like to hear from the other side, how the lawn mowing came about and how.
We're working on that.
How we were working on that.
Mm-hmm.
Because my understanding from the kids is it was, they were informed ahead of time so they could dress appropriately. It was more of a volunteer basis, but if not, it was, I say mandatory. But there again, I don't see anything wrong with them lawn mowing, as long as they know it is. It was a couple hours, there was a couple more hours of work for them, they got paid for it. So, just would like some more details on that little swimming pool lifeguard.
My follow-up to that would be that they're not getting paid where our other summer employees get paid to mow the weedy.
But they're saving us an overtime, uh, paying people to mow the yards, too, so. I mean, there's two different ways, you know, two things to look at that there. That's all.
Mallett?
Uh, nothing.
New business, none, immediate questions?
No, sir.
Need a call section tonight?
Nope.
Okay, motion adjourned.
So be it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.